Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, uh, July 19th, Rockingham School Board Meeting. We need to order 5:33. Pledge allegiance, do you have a flag in here? Yes, we do, right there. Oh, yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just for all. Any adjustments to the agenda? Yeah, we have a list of minutes that we can approve that we want to do that. Does everybody want to add minutes? Right after adjustments? Get those out of the way. Okay, so we'll add minutes. Right after adjustments, we've got several days, we'll go through that afterwards. Any other adjustments? Is there any executive session we anticipate tonight? I have none. So, is there anything that needs to be?
Unless you want to do anything on the negotiations or incentives during for protection of information, but I'm not sure it needs to be.
Right, so it sounds like no?
We can add it. If it gets, if something gets to be the point that we don't want to discuss, you know, is there something we can add it?
I have no negotiation updating the meeting. Okay. All right, so we'll, no executive session as it stands currently. Want to clarify the vacant board position, that's from my seat and specifically talking about who's going to take the chair position. What we want to do there, I mean, I don't know, we really need to go full on the reorganization, but
Well, that would be all, yes.
Pretty much, a couple committees. Okay. All right, no other, no other adjustments? Good, moving on to minutes. We have a list of minutes that need to be approved, that we have, I'll just list them off, ones that we have. 1221, 2020, 1-6, 1-13, 1-14, 1-19, 223, and 517. Everybody's looked at those, I'll take a motion to approve.
I hope that we approve the minutes that you listed. A second.
Jason, seconds. All in favor? Megan?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
As well, very good, so that is off the list. Still outstanding, we have 419, and I relate this to Nicole first, 419 of this year, 67 of this year, and then the last two town meeting minutes. Other than that, we'll be all caught up. Okay. Communications and public comment. Anybody out there? One once, seen a hand raised. One twice. Very good, thank you. Reports. Please, policy report, McKee Vento first reading. It's you, right, Priscilla?
Yes, the committee met and approved the McKee Vento policy, except for the, it had ESE in there, which is exceptional student education, because that's what they refer to it in Florida, so I think it was used from there. And we discussed at the WNESU meeting that that should be the LEA agency in place, so there's two. And I'm sorry, I'm assuming that has gotten done. And so we're okay with that as far as the first reading. We have to read it twice and then put it on it. So, we have two meetings where we look at that as bullying harassment policy, basically.
So this will be on the next?
It'll be on the next one for the second reading, yes.
So what's LEA? What is that acronym?
Um, LEAS, Local Education Agency, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say Mr. LRE instead of LEA. Sorry about that, thank you for correcting me, Laura, appreciate that. It's just who the person is able to contact to let them know about a case that they need to have looked into, and that's the person that they would. And there's just two spots in it that needed to be corrected to happen. The committee had given you permission to correct it, and we corrected it at the seven and a half, two meetings, but now it's our, each board has to.
Okay, so is that something we read now? Or is it?
It should be in there for you to read.
Okay, so this is the
So hopefully, if you, anyone who's looked it over, we can approve it as the first reading at this, at this point.
Okay, so this is basically presenting that it's ready to be read by board members?
Right, and hopefully
First time around, yeah.
Someone has looked it over, because I need to make a motion that we accept the first reading.
Okay, good.
I remove that we accept it as the first reading, and then we'll look at it again at the next one to the second reading, so.
So we have a motion to accept the
McKee Vento was the first reading.
Do I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Priscilla?
Aye.
It's an aye for me. Jason Terry?
Aye.
Megan? And motion passes. First reading is Any other committees? Any other committees that? Chris, you're aware?
Not that I'm aware.
The only thing I didn't have on here was the WNESU, which the big takeaway from that was you were restorative. Kind of, if, yeah.
Recovery plan?
Yeah, we have recovery plan, right? But if and then situations that Chris is looking at, and I think, were you guys there? So I don't have to So just, he just went over the recovery plan and some different avenues that they're taking to help with student achievement engagement.
And there are two meetings coming up for that, for that recovery committee. The next two months.
Any other, all other committees? Hearing none, moving on. Appointments and resignations. So I guess we probably ought to start with resignations, huh? Or do we want to just lump it all together? We, I mean, we pretty much have a list of both, right?
Yep, we do.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up, I have a list here somewhere. Okay, and that would be the one that Nicole sent out this afternoon, right? Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of those on there, I think Kerry could probably chime in if need to. Some of them have already been approved. And so
So how can we do this as a, as a bulk and still follow the rules? So we don't have to go through each one and?
Well, I thought, I thought this board already went through and did you guys already prove that the hires, the long list that was given a few months ago?
No, because we, we didn't have a meeting last, we were supposed to on the
So I would say just go through the, then you can use, you can use this list.
Okay, so we'll start with the resignations, I guess. I'll just read down through the names, is that all right? And I can tell you what they, I'll read their names and what they, they were doing. So resignations, Kristy Jackson, eighth grade social studies, Tony Serrani, music teacher, Melissa Petrowski, a librarian, Sax River, Erica Bazawi, science eighth grade, Linda Alvarez, seventh grade social studies, Holly Taylor, kindergarten teacher, Zach Mazoni, fifth grade teacher, Dawn Bazin, third grade teacher, Jeannie Hodson, we already got Jeannie Hodson. She's a nurse. Annie Bumford Rawlings, kindergarten teacher, Carrie Pickering, first grade teacher, Bill Scarlett, the school counselor, we already got them two, right?
We've got a lot of these.
Okay, well, we'll get them again just to make sure. A fourth grade teacher, Kate Kane, Carla Quadro, school counselor, Theresa King, seventh, eighth grade ELA. Those are the resignations, some of them are repeats, but it's on the list, so rather than sort out who we've already got, taking a motion to accept those, those resignations.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Pratt, are any of those teachers or staff moving to a different location in the district or?
A few.
I know at least one of them that I recognize is going to the SU.
Yeah, and you could say the middle, the role, you can match them up to see, but yeah, there are a few who are just moving from, you know, within district or within the SU.
So we're not losing them, we're just like transferring them to different spots?
Yeah, they apply.
So not all of these are resignations then?
No, they are, because they have to resign from their current position because they're in those.
Okay. Motion to accept those resignations?
Let's make a motion to accept the, anyone that is on the list who has not already done it.
Sounds perfect, do I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? Priscilla?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jason?
Hi.
It's an aye for me. Okay, we're going to appointments. So I'll just go down the list again with the names and what position they're going to.
I think the only one, Laura Rounds, we approved hers, but I think she's the only one that's not approved.
Okay. All right, so I'll go down the list, and if anything stands out, jump at me. Matthew Amendola, eighth grade social studies. Ellen Bowles, music teacher. Gillian Drake, librarian. Lisa Holderness, science eighth grade. Christopher Kelly, seventh grade social studies. April Putnam, kindergarten teacher. Samantha Redding, fifth grade teacher. Bethany Williams, third grade teacher. Kathleen Goodell, nurse. Kindergarten, I don't know where I'm here. Kathleen Carl, kindergarten teacher. Heather Murphy Hicks, first grade teacher. Alexa Phelps, school counselor. Laura Rounds, we already approved. Catherine Henley, school counselor. And Amanda Thevarge, seventh and eighth grade ELA.
Mine have approved Catherine.
No, we haven't yet, no.
I wasn't sure.
You've seen her name in emails, that's probably why, but we talked about her a while. So the well, you have a motion before discussion, take a motion to approve the women's?
I make a motion to approve the appointments that we have listed here, the additional ones.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion, we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye, Megan?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
It's an aye for me. All those positions are approved. Heads are approved. Unfinished business for discussion, action, action if any. Approved negotiation agreement. Going in line with how the WNESU approved it. And a motion that would be very similar to that. He would.
I make a motion that we commendation of the negotiation committee for the proposal to award an 1.5% increase in salaries for the 2021 year only. Since the salary for next year was not being negotiated.
Second.
Megan, yeah, thank you. Any discussion? This is going much faster than I was anticipating. Okay, we're ready to vote then. Hear any objections? All in favor, say aye. Priscilla?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
It's an aye for me. Okay. Teacher retirement incentive request, so we had our request, we did vote on it. This person came back to us, and we had an executive session where it was, some things were explained to us, ended up a bit of a clear picture. There was no motion to table, but out of respect for this teacher, I wanted to I wanted to see that the board had the opportunity to either move or not move on her request. So if there is no movement on the request, then the original motion stands. So the only thing that would change it is a new motion. So I'm just going to pause for a moment, if anybody wants to continue that discussion, otherwise the original motion will stand.
I'd like to say that my heart goes out to her. For, you know, any time that you retire from a position, it is moving, and it takes a lot of thought and a lot of consideration on the part of the person. I am pleased that she is coming back part-time at the Central School next year. I know they were talking about a room would be a different place, but I am glad to see that she's doing that. So I just wanted to comment that I understand it's a hard decision, and it's takes a lot. I know it did when I, when I got done and I watched teachers struggle with whether they should get done or should continue, or what they should do. It's very difficult.
Priscilla, any other, anything? Other board members? Hearing motion, so the original motion will stand. Great gratitude for this years and years of service.
Do, do we have the original motion, just so the public's aware? Or at least give the public a gist of what the motion is, of what the issue is that we're discussing?
So the original motion was to waive the deadline for the retirement stipend, which the deadline, I believe, is October. And, and the board voted not to waive that deadline. Any other discussion on this topic? Hearing none?
It was the motion to approve the retirement deadline waiver request. Is what the motion read. It was on May 17.
The request was made April, prior to that.
It was one, aye, two, nay, and two abstained.
Okay.
So the request was denied?
It was.
Any more? Now, let's see, new business for discussion, action if any. Request for student transfer to Rockingham. So this is the nurse that we just approved in the middle school, Kathleen Goodell. She requested her kids be transferred from Putney, trying to pull it up to be sure, from Putney, they live in Putney, and she's taking a job here, and she wants, she asked that her, her husband asked her children to be transferred here.
Because they reside in Putney.
They reside in Putney, they own business in Westminster. So I don't know the process for that.
So usually, you know, it all depends on what, what they're asking. She sent a letter, correct?
Yeah.
So you might want to read that letter, and then usually typically what happens is that the request comes out. There are, there are some ESUs out there that if they, it's not, you know, we don't have it, but other ESUs do, if a teacher attends, teacher, faculty member works here, then they're, you know, it happens more in private schools than it does in public schools, that their students can also attend here. So the question is, is if, if you have any student who, because the state says the student must attend school where their primary residence is. Their primary residence is in Putney, that's why she's asking here. The question is, if that student comes here, I need to, I think you need to look at past practices, and you also need to take into consideration, are you waiving the tuition that you charge for out-of-district students to attend the school? So that's what you have in front of you.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
Do we have a school choice policy that would cover that at all? Because I know you do at different levels, and what age level are her children?
Um, George has the
So I have a, I have an email here.
School choice is usually for high school.
But can it be for other ones too? Because we have students that come here from other schools. We get tuition money from them.
Putney would have to pay the tuition for them to come here, that's what I'm saying, if they're unwilling, you know. There's usually circumstances tied to it. If they're in state custody, or
My class.
IEP, you know, if it's part of their IEP, they want to stay, so those are the only circumstances that I'm aware of, is that students, other than high school students, that school choice is because it's part of their education, or state place students, IEP. There, you know, there are times where students will move mid-year, and I have the the right to approve them and stay for the, for the rest of the year. But anything over six months is, has to go in front of the board.
So if if we were to approve this move, what would that mean for them?
Either, I mean, what would that mean with them is, I, you know, one, is Putney going to pay the tuition? If not, it's two, are you guys going to waive the tuition? Or the two, because that means the taxpayers would
Right.
Flip the bill for that, so you break down, you do not have a policy that says any faculty or staff that work in the district there students can attend the school.
As a child, I attended school in Bella Falls for the first six years as a tuition student, because my mother taught in this district and grafted paid my tuition for here, so Putney might be willing to pay the tuition as well.
Great, and you know, any student can pay to come here. You don't need board approval, so I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that by the, by what I read in the letter, they're asking for their child to attend here tuition-free.
Has it worked in reverse previously?
What do you, what do you mean in reverse?
Where kids live here, go another school, has our school had to pay?
Yeah, if it's IEP related, a placement related, but outside that, no?
No, never.
Well, Westminster pays for the students to go to Putney.
If it's part of the, you know, grandfathered in, like Priscilla just said, Westminster is part of that, because the only, only time that happens is if, for instance, Westminster doesn't have a high school or many middle school in their town, then it's an agreement between you know, the two towns, that they'll come here. But they pay tuition. Westminster pays that tuition. So it's, it's usually only tied to IEP, state place kids, where kids go for, because the law is very clear that students need, must attend schools where their primary residence is. Where you, where you, where you reside majority of your time.
How much, how much is the tuition per child?
Here, I don't remember off the top of my head, it's different.
It's somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000. I don't remember what the
Is it possible to, to make it a condition if Putney agrees to pay the tuition? Could we ask Putney or have?
Parents would have to request to see if Putney's going to pay the tuition.
I mean, I feel like this
Do they already do that, do we know?
I don't know, I, this, I have this information right now, this
It's not common that a school just automatically flip the bill to send the student, because they can, they can say, we're not going to pay the tuition, we can meet the needs of the student right where they are, without costing our taxpayers, they're, you know, 13 to $16,000 is usually what tuition costs.
I think we should find out, you know, if Putney would, is willing to pay the tuition.
Yeah, you guys took a minute, but it
We pay to them for the Westminster ones, Westminster, we don't, Rockingham, but Westminster pays to Putney for those seventh and eighth graders.
There needs to be some sort of school choice, school agreement between the two schools, and that's up to the parents to ask that, not the board, to see if the, if they're willing to pay the tuition to come here. That's not something the board would do, that's on the parents.
As a board, would we be willing to consider splitting the tuition?
It's a, I think we should first ask, find out if Putney's willing to pay.
For what reason? Business manager, what would you do? That's a farce.
I would not take a financial effect of $18,000 for a student or waive $18,000.
So you would
For the whole school year.
You would take the money
Because the cost per student is higher than the tuition, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so overall, it's $18,000.
Financial impact to the, to the district.
I just, I remember my, my now senior
I saw how many of them, I'm sorry.
So it's six, you said six thousand that come here.
Yeah, but how many children, is it just one? Is it multiple?
And then cost per child is 18,000, so we could be taking a huge punch.
I don't see it here in this email that I'm looking at, but I thought in my mind, too, is the six thousand. Is she actually here?
Can you all hear me, I'm here?
Oh, she said, is she here, yes, hi.
Thank you.
Hi, so can we also take in, well, first of all, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, me, first of all, it's a eighth grade, going into eighth grade and going into fourth grade are my two children, and then can we also take into consideration the amount of taxes my husband does pay in the school district? He owns a fairly large business in the Windham Northeast District.
I, I think we are, I just, I think what we would like to do, though, is find out if Putney is willing to pay the tuition.
Yeah.
That's what we're kind of discussing, I don't know if you could hear us, but
Yeah, I could, and yeah, I can reach out to the interim superintendent. The problem is that their superintendent just left, so now there's a new one. So I don't know how much he's going to know about it, but I can reach out to him. I'm a school liaison with the state, so I have contacts for all that.
I would, I would reach out to the, the principal in Putney.
Okay.
Which I believe is what, is it still Mr. Proletir?
Yeah, it's her.
And then, and then reach out to the middle school, which is
It's the new Sue, Sue, so my big issue is that I accepted this position because Sue told me my children could attend.
To who?
The new principal at the middle
Yeah.
Well, they can attend, it's just that, we'd like you to ask first, you know, if, if Putney is willing to pay, and then we'll work with it, we're not, we're not wanting to leave you in the lead by any means, okay? But we'd like to know if they are willing to pay.
Okay, I will ask that, and then should I just email George?
Whoever's next.
We'll let you know, email next.
We'll let you know who to be emailed.
Chris, top.
If you email Chris, he can let one of us know.
Okay, thank you all very much.
New, the new superintendent over there is Max Quino, he's a, he's the former principal of Green. So he should be able, should be able to tell you.
Yeah, and I've worked with him before, so I can reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Megan?
It's like verbal double dutch, can't get in, so excited. No, all I wanted to say was, when my, my now senior many, many years ago was in kindergarten, we
many, many years ago was in kindergarten, we lived in a suburb of Houston called Katy, which was also the number one district in the area performance wise. And one of the policies they had to attract the teachers into the district was a waiver to allow students to, their, their children to attend the, the Katy I S D schools. So it's something to consider as an added bonus when we're trying to recruit quality teachers. I know I would hate having my children and it would be rough a district couple of towns away. Um, so I would really, this is a board to maybe consider something like that as we forward.
Yeah, maybe that can be on the listed policies too.
Yeah.
Because, uh, that.
We must have.
What you just, what you just said, it sounds, sounds, it would be perfect.
On the other hand, some don't wanna move their children because they want the consistency of staying where they are. So it, it's all in the negotiations. And, and we're not looking at, at telling her, we're not gonna do this. It's just.
Right, right. It's definitely a time. Yeah.
Priscilla, see more people on the screen instead of looking at us.
That's all the people that have the cameras on.
Who else is present?
All these people with cameras and microphones are shut off. You can only see them if they turn the cameras on.
I see. Okay. There. That's our thing.
You're not used to zooming in, George?
Not like moving like this. So, um. All right. Yeah. Uh, I'm not gonna be here, but, uh, my final thoughts on this is if there's a way to make it happen for them. I don't know her husband personally, but, um, there, I went to school with his, um, family members. Uh, they're well-known members of our local community being Westminster and, uh, they reside in Putney, but they, um, are certainly still members of this community. So there's a way that it could be made to happen. Um, that's my, my, my feelings on that. Any, uh.
So just to be clear, apologize, Saxon River Annihilation for FY twenty-two is actually nineteen nine thirty-two. That's the Saxon.
So could we, uh, somebody probably will wanna capture that and, um, forward that to, um, Kathleen. Right? I've got her email, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any pertinent information that she might need. Okay. Uh, anything else on this topic? Sorry for the delay Kathleen and, uh, thank you for being here. Okay, uh, retirement gift discussion? So I think this, this one was. Yeah.
We have teachers that have spent a lot of years in our district, um, giving a lot to our, our people. And especially this year, I think we're looking at the fact that it was a really tough year for everybody. I, we know as a board how tough it was for us. So we certainly, i- it's nothing like what those teachers faced and what, what they had to do. So I was thinking that, you know, people that have been here over twenty years in particular, um, it would be nice to put into, um, to put in there that we have something set that we can give them as a retirement gift when, when they retire. I was thinking, you know, if you looked at the number of years, um, when I was first addressing this, I was looking at teaching that I had thirty-six years. I was looking at, you know, maybe giving them something like a hundred dollars per year for anybody over, um, twenty years. If the board thought that was too much, we could put it down to twenty, I mean, you get down to twenty-five, it's not a lot. But I wasn't thinking just teachers. I was also thinking that our paras putting up a lot too. Any para that's been here twenty years, you know, that would be a nice thing to send them off saying, hey, we recognize what you have done for us when you stuck to our district and you've been part of us. So that's why I brought that up. So that's why it's there.
So I love that, Priscilla. But can you tell us, I remember David Clark bringing up what happened last time? It was discussed, was it met with resistance?
The S U board did. Okay. S U board did, did not.
Hang on, let me interrupt real quick before, so keep in mind that the teachers are employed by us, but the paras are employed, but employed by the S U. So having that, um,
Okay.
Align may, may add some le- level of difficulty.
Yeah. So it, we, but we certainly could do it with our teachers that are retiring from our district. Um, the high school has, um, over the years, they did a rocking chair or a straight chair to their teachers when they, when they retired. Now, one thing that happened speaking W N E S U was when I retired, I had been moved to the W N E S U because all special educators were moved. And so there was not that, although I put twenty-five years in at the high school in that one place, it wasn't recognized as the high school board. However, um, what they did was they ended up raising funds and my chair says from colleagues and friends and, and those committee members and stuff. And it's in my room. And every time I sit in it, I think on thought of everybody, that was a chair and a gift. But what I'm posing is maybe, uh, a financial thing, just so that they could spend it where they want.
Now, just, um, for a little deeper thought on it, would that, would you be thinking that if somebody announces that they're retiring prior to the October deadline, would that be in addition to or either or kind of a?
It would have to be up to the board on that. I mean, retirement is, is definitely a gift. That's why, I don't know, as far as levels and that kind of stuff that you would want to, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars for, for that incentive is pretty high. You know, I mean, this would not provide as much, but at least it would tell the teacher how much we cared about them.
And it wouldn't be as conditional as
Right.
the incentive, right?
That still would be a gift. So maybe it should be given to anyone that did.
I like it. Um, I, I think some more thought has to go into how it's going to align. We don't wanna leave the paras out there and then, you know, and then in the shade, um, they work just as hard. So.
Do we have another meeting before? We have another meeting before school year kicks off, right? We can kinda.
I mean, we can think about it some more.
Well, I don't, it's a, what, what can, I guess the question is what is, what do you wanna see happen here today? So.
Well, we definitely have, um, a teacher that worked in our district for a long time and is retiring. Um, even though she's working part-time in her school next year, she's still retiring at this point. It's put in all those years. It would be nice, very nice to give her something. I mean, the other thing I brought up was those that are returning this year, and that isn't on here, but those that are returning this year, maybe just giving a small gift at the beginning of the year to say welcome back and that we are glad that you are returning to those that are returning. Now, that's another option we have. But that could be next time.
That's a, that'll be a separate discussion, right?
Separate discussion.
So what do we wanna do here? We, we want, are we planning to take action on, uh, on something or?
What do my fellow board members feel?
You know, gotta consider the others, uh, that have retired from our district this year too, right? For the just her and Mr. Delsky.
Um, Chris, who, who actually retired or Laura, if you don't actually retired, her mouth in hand.
I, I haven't checked the list. You've had so many teachers leave. I don't know which ones are retiring, which ones are semi-retiring, which ones are.
Some are, are going to other positions and stuff.
Yeah.
For example, Jean is here, but she is going to another position. She's not really retiring. She's going to Rattle Girl.
Priscilla.
No, I don't know. I don't know anyone else who is actually retiring from our district.
Well, so I guess the, the point of my question was it's not gonna end up being a list of ten.
No.
People who.
No, it's, it's two, three tops. And we looked at it before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Because it doesn't include people that, it wouldn't include people that have just spent a few years here, you know, we, I worked somewhere else and then I came here for a few years. Or I worked here a few years and went somewhere else.
Long-term employees in the district, right? So what was the figure you put out?
I started with a hundred dollars per year.
Okay.
Um, we could do, if, if our board members feel that's too much, we could do fifty.
Hundred dollars a year, twenty years?
It's two thousand dollars. If they were here as much as forty years, that would be four thousand.
Or does that affect the C B A?
Um, it really doesn't unless the C B A decided that they were going to address that issue because it's not addressed in the C B A.
I don't feel comfortable voting on anything without Jason Benson saying my one Megan wasn't heard last time.
Laura, do you have any thoughts?
George won't be here next time.
Any thoughts on? Um, it's gonna impact budget, right? So it's gonna be something you're gonna have to think about.
So if you guys have this doesn't it now, and, um, so you do have surplus money that could come from there. And then, um, going forward, you gotta add a line to the budget, you know, to have that buffer constantly there. So, you know, we have some amounts always in save and planned for. And so Priscilla's offering, and there's a hundred dollars for somebody that is twenty plus years, right? That's where it starts.
And then when it comes time to town meeting, if anybody has an issue with it, we'll hear about it, you know?
Yeah.
We'll get our public feedback that way.
I don't think they will. And I think it's not even that great of a number, you know, so. I like it. I mean, um, understanding Jason's concern too, um, it's really up to you, Priscilla or Megan, if you want to act on it, um.
Okay. Let me go ahead and make a motion. Let me consider where we wanna go. I make a motion that we give a hundred dollars per year to any teacher that's retiring from our district who has served twenty and more years.
Starting, starting this year that just wrapped it. I'll second.
Discussion, which we've already discussed, discussions on the motion.
Are you comfortable with that now? Cause you can amend it too. I'm comfortable with that amount, but I'm open for anything. Yes, Jason, how you feel? Starts now.
No discussion. I, I don't think it's a good idea. I would, I would need more, uh, hard numbers to look at and I don't, I guess I'm indifferent.
I'm kind of a, uh, I like to sit on things a little bit longer most of the time, um, let it resonate and really get a full understanding, but I think this has been in the back of, uh, my mind enough, um, so I, I would be willing to vote on it if, um, if we're, do we have any more discussion? Keep going if anybody wants to. Any other reservations? Now's the time. Ready to vote? Wanna read the motion again? You got it written?
No.
Did you read it?
I, I would need that, um, we give a retirement gift of a hundred dollars per year for any teacher who served in our district twenty or more years.
I guess second, uh, I'm sorry. We ready to vote on that? Okay. Uh, Priscilla?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Jason?
No.
There's an aye for me. Motion passes. Twenty or over.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Will this have any, um, timeframe when they put their resignation in? This is for H R purposes, so we know.
I mean, they would have, they would have completed the year.
But they had to put their resignation by October?
No, this is separate from that. This is just saying, even if they're retiring tomorrow, it's just saying you've been here a long time. We appreciate you working down.
What is the effective date of this? Is it immediately or is it for next year?
No, it was the last. We put it in for last year. So with FY twenty-one going forward. Okay. That's why he asked you how many.
If you had ten or fifteen, we might.
We, we might have to reconsider.
And you might wanna wrap some policy around that, um, with more detailed language, um, for, you know, if. Yeah, if, you know, this is a, for certain scenarios that need become questioned.
Justin, you guys should be aware, if we do this for FY twenty-one, it will affect your FY twenty-two budget because we closed the year already. Our financials, they're closed.
It has to come out of this year.
Okay.
We realize that. We closed it.
Yes.
But I think, I think.
I think, uh, I think we're at the point where the motion passed, so, um, we can move on from, from this. And, um, any other questions or whatnot? Can we answer that over the date? Does that sound reasonable? Here, nothing. I'm gonna assume that means yes. Uh, vacant, vacant board position. So most everybody's aware, this is my last night as a board member. Um, so the seat will be open. I don't believe that we've got any letters of interest. Um, I don't believe Nicole's, let me know. Any of those. So if you're interested, please send a letter of interest to, uh, Nicole at the, uh, the S U and, um, but for the purpose of this, it's to talk about who may want to chair going forward. Is that a discussion you wanna have now or is it a discussion that you wanna take on the next, at your next meeting?
Is your, are you resigning effective now?
Uh, effective, uh, after we adjourn.
Well, then we can't discuss it now. That's why I'm saying, do you wanna resign now or do you wanna?
I will do it whatever you want, however you wanna do it.
Why? What?
He has to resign first.
Before we can.
I will do that if that's what you want, whatever you guys wanna do. It's basically, do you wanna deal with it tonight or you wanna?
Let's say resentment. I'll open, and I'll open it up with discussion and you guys can, because it would be helpful that we know who the board, I know who the board chair is for the next agenda. So.
All right. Well, I'm gonna say a few comments then, one or two, so, so that, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I really, um, value the relationships that I've built with you guys and getting to know you personally. Um, and thank you for all your hard work. Uh, last year was hard and I know there are a lot of sleepless nights and crazy hours. I know, Chris, you and I sometimes would have email discussions very late at night and, um, anyway, it's been a pleasure getting to know you guys and, um, I, I hope that, uh, this board can move forward with a, a certain level of empathy and, um, you know, respect, and I hope that I've shown that to folks along the way. So, um, thank you all and um, this is it for me. So farewell. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Now I'm a member of the public. I.
Thank you.
We should do the other director's comments.
I thought we were.
Cause we're in director's comment.
No, right now we're gonna, he resigns and we can discuss it. Yeah. Cause I need someone in the seat. So when we start coming up with the agenda for our next meeting, I know who it is. So let's open it up for discussion of, um, who would like to take over the role to be the next board chair of the Rockingham Board.
Do I need to leave or just be silent?
We can stay. If you stay there. Now we're into a discussion.
Thanks, Priscilla.
Pardon?
So what are you thinking?
Well, I have worked my hardest to get George to agree to stay on at least as a member of the board. He knows that. I've had discussions with him privately. I've had discussions on the other, um, it makes me sad to do that. I don't think any of us want to replace him. Um, I, I, you know, I don't know. I would do it if that's what the board wants me to do. Um, I would rather like George to stay.
So let me ask this. Do I have any nominations for board chair?
We're fleshing that part out. What are you thinking?
I, I do that a little bit.
I don't feel comfortable with Priscilla doing it. So I feel like if you're willing to take that on, I would.
I'm willing to try.
Right.
Um, with your support. Um, that's the only way. And with Chris's support, I mean, he's, you know, there's a lot there. I know there's a lot that goes on. I know George. that goes on, and I know George did huge, huge amounts. Um, I respect him totally. Cannot fill his shoes the way he did it. There's no way, I don't think any of us can. And if somebody told me they absolutely loved it, that you and I talked for minutes, they would miss that.
I mean, is it with with WN, with the high school board, it wouldn't be too much? Cuz I I'm not, you know, I'm, I don't wanna throw it at you, Priscilla, but I, me, he, he's not interested, I'm pretty sure Jason Benson wasn't interested at this time and just.
I'm I'm stretched way too thin with
Yeah.
work and extra brick activities plus other boards and uh, you know, I'm trying to just to see this through with the Rockingham negotiations um myself, so.
I I feel too new, and I like what I do as a board member. I I don't want to shift into the guiding position yet, I feel like I have so much still to learn about how boards operate. I feel like a natural segue would be you. Take a deep breath.
I probably have more time than the rest of you, if they're retired.
This is a big year, four kids and three schools and.
But we've got some busy times coming up too, we've got um, we've got um budget coming up, but Laura does a lot for that. Um
Negotiations.
Negotiations, but Jason's working on a lot of that. Um, so I'm doing recovery plan, but that's a whole big committee that, and they're doing a lot, and you've done a lot of background stuff on that.
I I would happily remain your vice chair and and help, however, you know, learn from you as we go. I don't want you to feel like we're like, well, good luck, stick you in the hot seat in the target.
Feel their weight.
Good luck.
Yeah, I need some help, that's why.
So Chris, is this where we nominate, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll do everything I can, my office to help whoever it is.
Yep.
So um we're not just, you know, we're in this together, we're not gonna just throw anyone to the wolves, we're gonna get through this together, so now would be the time that um someone makes a nomination.
So I, so I would like to nominate Priscilla Lambert for the position of board chair for the Rockingham School this.
Any other nominations? Okay, like to, so before I put it, do you accept that nomination?
I will accept it at this time with the idea that I need lots of help.
Thank you. I will cast one vote as Priscilla Lambert to be the next Rockingham School Board Chair, is there any discussion? Okay, that said, thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Congratulations, Priscilla.
If you decide you want to reapply as a member, feel free.
Email our board chair.
For a price.
Thank you so much, George.
It's been a pleasure, George.
Guys, I'm trying to stay silent, I'm not part of the board, but.
You're a committed member, you must be.
At that time, it's about coming guns.
Okay, Priscilla, the meeting is yours.
Thank you.
Director's comments, Megan?
Um, I'm gonna use my comments to thank George for um, you know, leading us through a a very eventful year, um I I like to think he set the tone that we all picked up with each other, it's the board I joined in October, November is not the board that we're sitting with now, and I think that is a lot to do with George's leadership. Priscilla, thank you for taking the chair position, I appreciate that very much personally. Terry and I would have run out of the building had y'all looked at us to be board chair at this point, so, thank you.
George just can't stop smiling over this.
Freedom feels good at this.
So uh my comment is, George, I know you, I knew you a little bit prior to this, um and you're even a better person than uh the outside looking in, just knowing the experience, a good family, a good dude. And uh lastly, I just, uh Mr. Harley Sterling is crushing it with the uh the meals again, and you know, we we always talk about negative stuff, negative stuff, but uh, you know, when you, somebody's really doing something right, you don't ever hear that person's name, and he is doing a fantastic job for all the kids in this community and all the families, so. Thank you, George, thank you, Harley, wherever you are.
George, I don't think there's any way that we can do all that you have done and all the wonderful things that you have done for this district. Um, we'll certainly work on it, we'll keep trying to be kind to each other. And keep in mind that it's been a stressful year for everybody, and to have come through it and be at the point that we are as board at this moment is amazing. Because COVID has taken a toll on all of us. And it's it's nice to be starting to open up, I know there's some concerns over the variants out there, but with the levels that Vermont has up in the eighties of being vaccinated, I really think that we can be comfortable that we live where we live and be just thankful that we're here. Um, we do encourage anybody to reach out, and as George said, if anybody is interested in filling the vacant position, please send a note to Nicole so that we can look at that. Okay, so date, time, and location, that's needed, we have been doing the third Monday, right, um, yeah, third Monday. Do we want to do that, do we need one sooner than that, what do you think, Mr. Pratt?
When's the next scheduled board meeting for you guys?
It would not be until the sixteenth of August, the second would be, or we always had the second and the third one, and George had wanted to go to the third. Second, because um teachers and those.
I I think you guys would be okay until August, cuz usually most ESUs don't have any board meetings in July at all, and so their first board meeting would be, you know, second or third of August, or fourth.
It would be either Monday the second or.
Fourth to sixteenth.
Fourth to sixteen.
Four weeks, do you wanna go four weeks or two weeks?
Four.
Four, okay. And if something crops up that we absolutely needed to, we can have a special meeting before that, but we'll do the sixteenth at five thirty. And here at the Mid High School?
Yep.
Yes. Is there anything else that needs to come before us?
We have a agenda items for next meeting.
Anything that you would like to?
My uh family received this letter in the mail that I, or brought home, uh informing uh children about the uh, have to wear a mask on the bus, she's uh, my daughter's about the summer school program, and I really just wanna make sure that we uh take a real logical, common sense approach to this, and um, you know, there's a lot of fear out there, I get it, but um I think we we need to this needs to be on the next agenda, uh next agenda item as far as masking, and um I'm in favor of not masking, so I wanna make sure we're.
Um, question for you on that, though, because the mask you on the bus, if we're waiting four weeks, that will be basically at the end of the summer school program.
Well, that's a, that's a state, that's something we can do, that's a statement date, so on the buses, so we can't even do anything about it if we wanted to.
Isn't that a federal policy that anything on public transportation?
CDC, it's the uh
I think it's a rule.
The CDC, that's a CDC, so we can't do anything about it.
But isn't, isn't it a law too, um not just CDC, isn't it, isn't it a federal law that anything like transportation, buses, planes, trains?
I don't know, all I know is that the CDC has required that any transportation, including school buses, we need to wear masks, I mean, school buses, we need to wear masks.
Even if they're vaccinated.
Yep.
Yeah, like, I guess I don't wanna.
Yeah, I don't think that. But we can put it on aerosolized masks and and see where we're.
Between now and then, who knows, the world can change sixty times, and uh, you know, we gotta be ready for it, and we uh just have that in the agenda, I guess.
Okay.
Who knows what's gonna happen?
Is there anything else that we know that we want on the agenda for next time?
Just as a note, I know I'm a public, but Nicole likes to get the uh stuff, any agenda items by Wednesday prior to a Monday meeting. To get her a little bit of time to put things together and get it out to even more than one. Thank you, George.
So if you can let me know if there's anything else that you want.
So we're gonna revisit um Goodell, pardon? Cackadell. We're gonna revisit, we're gonna revisit that.
Okay, perfect. We'll save that small before then, or where we're at. I'll put that down. Okay, um if there's no other items, you know, we will adjourn at six thirty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good night, everyone in the public as well, thank you for doing this. Hey, Carrie.